We'd like to welcome the public to the Sarasota County School Board. This is our work session for today, March 4th. It's approximately 1 o'clock PM. We did run longer this session earlier than we thought. So with that Superintendent Connor?
Thank you Board Chair. As we begin today's workshop session, we are going to be discussing three items today. Safety and security, our ELL plan that we will be submitting to the Florida Department of Education for your review, as well as a strategic plan update on Pillar Five specifically related to our communication efforts. So at this time, I'm going to hand it over to our safety and security team that includes Chief Ruiz, Sean O'Keefe, and Jason Overbay in our safety and security office to provide an update, as well as our state inspection report that is required by statute.
Thank you Superintendent Connor, Chairman Ennis, distinguished members of the board. We appreciate this opportunity this afternoon to come before you and talk about safety and security, and how our state compliance checks have been going here in Sarasota County. Today, we'll talk about the district and state compliance checks, briefly touch on the security aid program and some of the training that we've been offering. We'll go over the proposed school security legislation that is on file right now, and Chief Ruiz will close us out discussing some police department issues. To talk about our state inspections, as the superintendent had mentioned, House Bill 1473 requires that we come before you quarterly and discuss what our state inspections are. We'll go over a little bit about what's involved with that. The Florida Department of Education Office of State Schools, they have to inspect every school in the state of Florida once every three years. The school safety specialist in each county is required to inspect every school, traditional and charter school, and we have to write, both the state and I have to write a report inside of the Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool that talks about how those inspections went. There are 27 different items that we have to touch on inside the inspection that covers everything from after-action reports and drills into how the school is hardened against And the district compliance visits this year, we have already finished all 57 schools. Our main area of need for us to fix was compliance with state requirements on certifications for threat management. We were able to work with our district threat management coordinator, Michael Santagata, and Cindy Watzel to get all of those certificates back out to the schools to make sure that would not be an issue when the state came in and inspected. We've worked very closely with the administrators going through our inspection to make it as difficult as we could, so that they would be prepared for any of the six state inspectors that might come in, so that they would be ready for any type of question and any type of issue that might have come up for them to answer. We're always there for support, but we are not supposed to answer the questions they want the administrators to answer on behalf of the school. We also work very closely with the administrators and the school resource officer to fix any deficiencies that might come up during our inspection. This year, the state has come in this quarter and has inspected 14 schools, just two schools just last week on Wednesday. We've had nine of those 14 go through the inspection without any blemish whatsoever, which is an amazing feat. M.E. Booker Elementary, Tuttle Elementary, Lakeview Elementary, Brentwood Elementary, Imagine School at Palmer Ranch, Sarah Middle, Pine View School, Booker Middle, and Bayhaven School, all went through their inspections and didn't have a single blemish inside of their inspection. We're very proud of them. We had 79% of the schools that we've had inspected so far make it through without any violations or only minor paperwork violations, and 56% of our schools that have been inspected to date have made it through their inspections with absolutely no violations. That's our state-required report on the state inspections. That'll come up on the 11th for y'all to approve that report. Talk briefly now about the security aid program. We were honored to take that over in July of '23. We've worked very hard to improve our staffing numbers, to where now we have interviews coming on, I believe Wednesday, with two day shift vacancies and one night shift vacancy. Our safety officer program has been very effective. We have all of those officers hired, and they are going through the schools, helping our elementary and middle schools with security after hours and just being eyes for administrators for things that might be violations of House Bill 1473 to bring to those administrators' attentions, so that we can get them fixed. We have increased the amount of training that all of our security personnel go through. We have really worked hard on de-escalation in techniques, improving their verbalization, and talking to them about how they deal with situational awareness and how is best to approach different types of situations that they may find themselves in on school campuses. We go through very explicitly with them district policies, procedures, as well as state law, so that they know what and where they're supposed to act and what their parameters are within that. We believe that we, the increase in training and the focus that we've had has really improved the contribution that they're making at the schools and the contribution that they're making with students, making the culture there better on a daily basis. Quickly going in now to the proposed security bills. The Senate and the House have both submitted separate bills. House Bill 1403 requires schools to follow provision of House Bill 1473 at a minimum of 30 minutes before the start of school to 30 minutes after the end of school. This allows the school to kind of revert back to other security procedures after those times and not have to worry about 1473 compliance. It allows for certain gates inside the secured perimeter to be left open and unmanned without a waiver, so they don't have to worry about that violation if a playground gate or something like that has been left open and hasn't been closed or isn't manned. The House bill also is very specific. It allows for, right now, there is no exemption period for any classroom door, so it allows for career and technical education classrooms. If there is a health and safety need for classroom doors or garage doors to be open for student health, that allows us to waive those doors, so that they can be open. Right now, we're not allowed to do that. Also, it names common areas such as cafeterias, auditoriums, can be unlocked when there is not state testing or some type of instructional time going on inside, which would alleviate some of the issues that we're having right now with student movement during the class day. The Senate bill is very similar. It is Senate Bill 1470. It allows, or instead of saying 30 minutes prior to school and 30 minutes after, it calls that time school supervision hours and leaves it up to the state and the district to determine what that is. It also allows us to waive, or not waive, but allow certain gates to be open on campus as long as they're inside of our internal perimeter without penalty. And instead of allowing us to waive certain CTE classrooms, it is asking for the Office of State Schools to create a list of exemptions for campuses similar to the CTE classrooms to where we would not have to keep those doors closed, locked, or manned during school hours, and we would not be out of compliance with House Bill 1473. We are working with HR right now and IT to satisfy the new rule in the, let's see, it's 18, so it's 6A118, excuse me, that requires that we certify that parents have been trained in Fortified Florida. We will be working with IT and HR to have that inside of focus, so that parents, when they're signing for the Student Code of Conduct, they also will sign that they understand what Fortified Florida is and what the penalties for false reports of Fortified Florida are. We have done a good job of making sure that all students are trained, and then we went the extra effort. Also, at Mr. Diaz, the Chancellor of Education's request, to make sure parents were trained in Fortified Florida in December after the shootings in Georgia had an uptick in false We are also working on fingerprinting for the district. Fingerprinting is now being transferred from FDLE for school districts over to ACHA or the Florida Department of Health, and so that, all district personnel will have to be re-fingerprinted over the next three years. So we've been gearing up in our fingerprint office to get ready for that. We'll be visiting all the school sites, so that we can fingerprint our staff at a convenient time for them, so that they don't really have to go out of their way to get fingerprinted. ACHA has a lot of different rules than what FDLE had. We'll have to take pictures of all the employees and send them in, but it'll also allow, once you've been fingerprinted and if you're within your retention time, if I move from Manatee County to Sarasota to be a teacher, I don't have to be re-fingerprinted. So those costs will not have to be transferred back to the employee. So in the long run, it's going to be a very good thing for us. And we have been working with, very closely with our law enforcement partners, including Chief Ruiz and the School District Police Department, and our fire partners on reunification, making sure that we're all on the same page when it comes to reunification, how if that type of event would occur here in Sarasota, depending on what jurisdiction it occurred in, what everybody's role is, where reunification would take place, so that we don't have some of the issues that have occurred in some of the other locations. We have met with some of the parents, families from Marjory Stoneman. We had Ms. Lori Aladeff speak to our staff in July, and we have redoubled our efforts to make sure that reunification is one of the areas that this district is very strong in.
So I want to take just a few moments to, a very important piece as far as highlighting our staff, not only in the police department, but the safety and security. As you know, the district highlights through the program SES CAREs, excellent staff for jobs that they do throughout our schools, and I'm proud to say that the majority, the department with the most nominations and awards this year has been safety, security, and the police department. Here you see the list of folks in the months of who was nominated and who won the award. On top of that, just this past Thursday, our police department's evidence specialist, Panishment, won the school-based employee of the year for this year, and I just want to give a shout out to her, and now she is eligible for recognition at the state level. And so, I just want to recognize, this is just a snippet of all the staff within safety and security that do an amazing job, and not only are intentional about changing the culture of our schools with safety and security, but have amazing relationships with teachers and students that truly make a difference. And in closing, just want to thank the board for your continued support in safety and security and leadership provided. A lot of the questions and things that you bring up are very important to us, and we take all that information and apply it back to how we can improve safety and security. And just want to thank you all and Superintendent Connor for your support.
Board, any comments? I'll go ahead. I want to appreciate all the efforts of school police officers, the dedicated officers that are on campus every single day, Mr. Overbay, Mr. O'Keefe, I mean, obviously, technology-wise and all the stuff that you're doing in the schools. You know, one of the things that, as it keeps coming up, is, you know, I know we had some violations, but one of the things that I would say to all of our administration, you know, we've had different policies as we've enacted here at Sarasota County School District as we were, on most of these, we were leading, and that we were the very first in the state in order to do a lot of different things, you know, whether it was lockdown buttons, the drills, the safe corners, I mean, a lot of different things that came under Marjory Stoneman Douglas, but we also have had here like a locked-door policy since 2018. And so one of the reasons why we do all this stuff is because of things that end up happening like this, which is, I gave the board, this came out a while ago, this is in reference to Robb Elementary School, which is the, from Texas, in reference to the House Representatives, and what it does is it is very, very critical in the law enforcement response, but it's also very, very critical in reference to the school administration response in reference to deficiencies that were on their campus. I know with all three of you that are here today, I know that that's the things that ultimately, you know, safety and security, kids can't learn if they don't feel safe, teachers can't teach if they don't feel safe, and that's one of those things that we just have to make sure that we should be 100% compliant. That's ultimately the goal, because every single kid, because I could tell you that Robb Elementary School, you know, they had a culture of, that started that, they had a locked-door policy, but the culture was they didn't need to lock their doors, which ultimately led the shooter, the murderer, to go in the back door, which was left unlocked, to a classroom, which had been reported that the door lock didn't work, which had been a work order, which never got fixed, which also to a Wi-Fi system for the lockdown, which I know, as Mr. Overbay, Mr. O'Keefe knows, painstakingly Motorola has come through here to make sure that we can get, have strong Wi-Fi as reference to being able to transmit on our radios to the schools. But at the end of the day, all of those different things on a place in Uvalde, Texas, that people would have never have thought that would have occurred, is it could occur anywhere, as well as it did at Parkland. So whether you're high socioeconomic or low socioeconomic, I would have, any principal or anybody, if you really want to see and really make you outraged, is to read the report, because it does show the law enforcement failure, but it also shows in reference to the complacency issue, and maybe just one locked door would have kept that person out till law enforcement got there, and maybe we could averted some of the tragedies. But unfortunately, Murphy's Law is that if it's going to go bad, it's all going to go to bad. And I could tell you here at this district, as we've gone painstakingly for fencing, all of the things that are required, and we appreciate, I could tell you as a board member, I totally appreciate all of the stuff that you guys do, continue to make sure that we're appraised and we're up to date on those things, and as the law changes, which we know it will again for next year, again with the briefing from this morning, you know, I thank you for all of the information, and I know that we'll strive to get to 100%, because I think that's what's deserved here in Sarasota, because we should always lead and we should never follow when it comes to safety and security here, because that's what our parents have an expectation, and so do our teachers, because our kids are our future. Any other comments from the board? Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Superintendent Connor?
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to move on to our next item, which is the review of our English Language Learner Plan that we will be submitting to the DOE after review with the board. So we have our supervisor of ELL, Ms. Megan Parento, Kristi D'Souza, and Rachel O'Day, who will be here to review our plan.
Good morning, or good, no, it's not morning anymore. I was in here in the morning. Good afternoon, everyone, great to see you again, and we are happy to share with you our ELL plan moving forward for the next three school years. This is something that is state statuted, that does have to occur with your approval every three years, similar to the ESC plan we went over at the end of the year last year, and similar to our pupil progression plan and our comprehensive reading plan, which those are annual, but this is similar to that. We know that you worked hard previewing this, it is a long document, and there have been revisions and updates made, so Ms. Parento will be focusing on that high-level overview, knowing that you've already read this, but please feel free at the end of this short presentation, if you have any further questions, that we'll be happy to answer. Ms. Parento?
Thanks, good afternoon, guys. Let me go on ahead and get started. So as you can see up on the screen, there are an abundance of laws, statutes, and rules that really govern the way our ELL program is developed and the services that we provide to our students. We developed the plan to outline the strategies and procedures that we will use to provide an appropriate education to our L students, ensuring that they receive equal access to a quality education. As Mrs. O'Day said, these are to be redone every three years and submitted to the state for approval, and if at any time we want to go back and amend, make some changes to the supports that we provide our students, we can do that by making an amendment, bringing it back to you guys, and resubmitting to the state. The plan is composed of 11 sections, and I'm going to give you just a quick, little brief overview of them, very minor changes from years previously. A lot of our rules and laws regarding Ls has not changed, so not much different, but going to let you know about each section. Section 1 includes the procedures for enrolling new students who are English language learners, including parents completing the home language survey. They do that upon registration, fully integrated into Focus and our system. We're very excited that our home language survey is available in eight languages currently, and if it is not available in parent's home language when they come to register, we do have ILA devices in schools. Schools can utilize the language line to really make sure we have broken down that communication gap with parents while they're registering. Upon registration, we also identify immigrant students, students that have been enrolled in a school in the US for less than three years, and we identify their deuce date. Section 2 focuses on the placement of L students based on their assessment data. So when they come in, they're identified as a potential English language learner based on their home language survey questions. Our school-based ESOL, could be a paraprofessional, could be an ESOL liaison, a program specialist, administers the WIDA screener to our students, and if they meet a certain criteria, we will offer them supports in the ESOL program. It is also important to note that if students score above the threshold for services, but we really feel like it's in the student's best interest to be enrolled in the ESOL program, we can convene an ELL committee meeting and offer parents those ESOL supports as well. Go back one, I got excited. Section 3 encompasses the procedures that we utilize to ensure we're placing L students in the correct grades, courses, and programs. Anytime a student comes to us from another country that is receiving L services, we always go back and do an academic assessment of their transcripts, their records. We honor course credits as necessary, especially in the high school area, and when students come to us with no transcripts, with an interrupted education, especially in the high school, again, our guidance counselors work tremendously to make sure that we're putting students in the appropriate classes and placements for them, and if they were already enrolled in an ESOL program, those supports continue, and if they were not, we start them with supports when they arrive with us. Section 4 identifies the various models of instruction used here. The preferred model at many of our schools is mainstream inclusion, however, our secondary schools also do utilize self-contained and sheltered classes for language development purposes. In addition, all of our district schools have additional push-in ESOL support through paraprofessionals and ESOL liaisons. Section 5 specifies that all L students will participate in Florida statewide assessments, regardless of their level of English language proficiency. L students are provided the following accommodations during statewide assessments: flexible seating, flexible scheduling, assistance in a inherited language, and the use of an approved dictionary. A letter is sent home to all parents notifying them of the accommodations. Parents can opt out of those accommodations if they would like to, but we do let them know that is a standard accommodation offered to all students. Section 6 focuses on L students who are ready to exit the ESOL program. We look at their academic data and level of English proficiency to make a determination. Just like students can be entered into the program through an ELL committee, students can also be exited through that as well, meeting various criteria that's laid out in the plan in depth, and we always include teacher feedback and report card grades, among other things, when making a determination on an exit. Section 7 is our monitoring procedures. This includes how we monitor students who have been recently exited from the program, as well as how we in the district manage the ESOL program itself. Students who are exited from ESOL are monitored for another two full academic years to make sure that they're continuing on a path of success, and if during those two years, while we're still reevaluating those students, we think continued services would be in their best interest, again, we can convene an ELL committee meeting and reevaluate that student and potentially put them back into reclassification to continue receiving supports. Section 8 details the involvement with families of L students. As mentioned previously, it is critical that we break down the communication barrier with families to best support students. We regularly send home district and school-level communications to families in their preferred language through Focus, which they can select themselves, and parents have the ability to select languages that they would like things to be translated into. Some of our families still choose English through Focus, but it's really important that they have that ability to choose how they want to receive their communications. Again, we have language line at all schools, and all of our Title I schools have ILA devices, and next year, all of our schools will have ILA devices to be utilized to communicate with families. Section 9 focuses on the parent leadership council at both the district and the school levels. Each school hosts annual ESOL family nights developed by their school-based PAC, and we are proud to say that this district ELL plan has been developed with, reviewed, and approved by our district PLC president, Ms. Petishkova. Section 10 identifies the way that we train our teachers and school-based support staff to ensure teachers of L students are all ESOL endorsed, because we know all of our teachers are ESOL teachers. We offer professional learning three times a year to staff to earn their ESOL endorsement. This is monitored in collaboration with our Human Resources Certification Department. Our professional learning sessions are available online and facilitated by trained ESOL liaisons and program specialists here. We also host monthly professional learning sessions with our ESOL liaison cadre, to ensure that they are up to date with best practices in both instructional coaching and ESOL instructional strategies. Our last section, 11, is extension of services. In here, we really discuss the pathway to determine if a student will need an extension of services. So if a student hasn't met the criteria to be exited in three years, what do we do? We dig a little deeper. Is it an English language proficiency barrier? Are there other things that we need to look at? So we will continue to monitor that student in the ESOL program and utilize ongoing evaluations. Teacher feedback, grades, standardized test scores, and alternative assessments may indicate that the student might be better served by another instructional program or a combination of programs to best meet that student's needs. The goal is to have all students exited from the program by year six. So there's no action that's needed today, but we are asking for approval of the district ELL plan at the board meeting next Tuesday. Again, if changes to the plan are requested by the DOE, those modifications will be made and resubmitted for your approval. At any point during the duration of the plan in the next three years, we can make changes as our program grows and new policies are enacted, and we'll amend the plan and ask for your approval from then as well.
So we'll take questions at this time.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Edwards?
When you do your parent outreach, because I know this is a dilemma across the board, across the board, what is your success rate? Do you capture that?
We do. All of our schools are required as part of having an annual night to submit to us their agenda, sign-in sheets. Parent feedback, a lot of our schools choose to do surveys if a parent really appreciated the night, what they got out of it, what they would like to see next. So we do house all of those records within the ESOL department. A lot of our schools recently have pivoted and have been hosting some virtual events for families, and those have been really successful as well lately.
That's great, I'm glad to hear about the virtual accommodation. What I've noticed in general about parents and families overall is that sometimes after hours is just not the time, and I know that with union requirements and all that sort of thing being available on the weekends is sometimes difficult. Do you still capture that data? Do you still find out if that's the better time to meet?
We do, and a lot of our schools are really proactive in scheduling those and asking parents what days and times work for them. We see a lot in the elementary level, especially daytime programs. We have lunch bunches with parents of ESOL students. We have homework help for parents during the school day that are We have homework help for parents during the school day that our school-based ESOL liaisons are facilitating with parents. So our schools have been very receptive to how they can best support parents and really bring them in. We have a phenomenal parent outreach facilitator on the team, Ruth, back there, and she works probably harder than most.
Yeah, I know that's the hardest job. I know, it's the hardest job. Do you think we're at 50%, 30%? What would, if you had to take a guess?
It varies. It all depends on the school.
Yeah.
But could you just give us a, take a stab?
Our goal is to increase our parent's.
Good answer.
Until it's 100%, we're not happy.
That's a good answer.
Yeah, I would say it's probably somewhere between 40, 50% of our ESOL parents are coming tonight. We're going to see schools with much higher percentages. We have schools with much lower percentages as well, but we definitely have some standout schools where we're getting very, very high turnouts.
When you actually engage parents, do you find they need additional wraparound services ever? Do you assess those needs?
I was going to say, we actually bundle a lot of this, because we know you can't just have an ESOL night, or a math night, or a reading night. We try to do nights that incorporate a lot, because when we have you on campus and we've been looking for you, we're going to take advantage of that.
While you're here.
Yeah, you know, in our homeschool liaisons and our Title I schools do a lot. We have positions in certain schools that are specializing, like what Ruth is doing, and making sure that we're grabbing all of our families. So it doesn't just stick with this population of adults, it's actually any adults. So I think sometimes that percentage is hard to capture, because you look at who's coming to what, and how do we make sure we have more people, and we take care of as many things as possible, especially in our Title I schools.
I know that's, it's a general challenge. Ruth, thank you. That is one hard job. The monitoring process, what is the criteria by which, what are you actually monitoring?
While she's looking, do you mean while they're in the program or when they're out of the program, monitoring for two years?
Okay. So while they're in the program, we monitor their growth on standardized assessments compared to their subset of colleagues and cohorts, as well as our general population of students. We make sure that they're growing at the same rate as everybody else and that they're receiving the services that are most impactful for their growth. When we look at monitoring the program, we look at things like our parent engagement nights, right? Are we doing those things, or do we have that outreach? When students exit the program, we follow their academic success as well. That's all monitored on more spreadsheets than I think, you know, we need. And schools, schools do a lot of that lift as well. Our school-based ESOL liaisons are such a powerful and important part of this work and this role, because they're in the classes still every day with students, supporting them and supporting teachers. So they are really the ones who are in there monitoring student learning and student growth, and pivoting and making changes where they see that changes need to be made to best support students.
Like in our general literacy programs, and they're monitored. When you find early on that they're not where they need to be, what do you do?
So one thing, just to go a little deeper on what Ms. Parento said, the WIDA test that they administer that's different than everyone else's standardized testing, that gets into their abilities to speak the language of the country that they're in. And the language proficiency is really where we're digging in and how to develop those skills, because that is the barrier to learning. It's not a disability, it's actually an exceptionality. They are multilingual learners. They're more advanced than our, than us and our monolingual learners, right? So we have to embrace what they, what language they do speak and try to enhance them into speaking our language so they can access the learning equitably like all other students. So that is really what data they look at within the program as ESOL liaisons, in partnership with that core teacher and literacy approaches, because we're still teaching literacy skills at the foundational level, although they may be a fluent reader in their own language. But to get to that point, they have to be able to use our foundational skills in English to put words together, make meaning and context like a general reader. That's what's happening in the program. When they exit, we are looking to make sure they're getting to proficiency on our English test, right? In English, getting to proficiency. If they're not, we're looking at, well, what else is going on? Because we could have two, another thing, there could be dyslexia, there could be other issues that are preventing that student from progressing. So that's that two-year monitoring period to make sure they get to a proficient on-grade level range, even after exiting the program. If they don't, as Ms. Parento said, they dive back in, they provide more supports, and we look into why we're not progressing at the rate of peers if I've learned the language and exited the program.
And to add to that, we have two supplemental resources that we're using. One is Imagine Learning, which is helping provide an instructional, a personalized instructional pathway for students, especially for our students who are speaking, whose primary language is not English, as well as we've invested in a new teacher repository of ELL resources. Our elevation platform has a tremendous amount of support for teachers to help their students who are ELL.
Thank you for that work. It's a challenge. I was in a Northport elementary classroom, and in one classroom, there were six different languages being spoken, which is, I'm completely overwhelmed as to what that must be like. So thank you so much for your work. Good job.
Ms. Ziegler?
Thank you. Well, no, I know I said this the last time you guys presented, I couldn't be more excited that we're able to dive in and your enthusiasm, and I know you guys are off to the races. And there's a lot of work to be done, even to what Mr. Edwards just said, just knowing that each, and even, I know it wasn't picked up by the mic, but when it was talked about parent engagement, the response was that it varies from school to school and grade, and that makes complete sense. And so being very prescriptive at each place, and I think you guys really provide that support. I think my question then is, as we look ahead, now that you've really been able to lift the hood, what do resources look like to really help our students achieve that or support our staff when you have an unknown of six, you know, six different languages, and they're coming in at different levels? So that's one question. And two, just when thinking of levels, how many, because I don't know how frequent it is, you mentioned that some, you know, we pick up credits and we will continue services if they come from, come to us from a different district or different state, whatever, that have had ESOL services, but some don't. Is that common, or is that rare? I mean...
I'm going to start with the first, and then I'll have you piggyback. Two things that we just did recently in progressing towards the future. Typically during staffing allocation time, you have to look at the budget, and you have to figure out what are we earning to support our students. And Superintendent just made a commitment to go well above and beyond what we budgeted for our ESOL paras and our liaisons, because, you know, we may have been one or two or three or five children off from maybe meeting that threshold, which means, okay, we have to cut the unit, surplus the staff, and then see if we get it back. But what ends up happening with that is you may not get that staff back. And they may either be placed at a different school, or they may just leave, you know, altogether, and then we have a vacancy in our support. But he's committed to overstaffing in 10 different schools, which equates to a number that Ms. Pinner is very familiar with, which is upwards, you know, close to a million dollars, allocating to make sure that that staff stays in place, because we know that that population can be a little bit more migrant than others, and allowing some of that dust to settle and keeping that staff on until the start of the year and reevaluating those numbers in a more realistic timeframe, so that we don't have any gaps in services. So that's a change to how we do our allocations for a certain, you know, student group, in addition to expanding the use of elevation, which I'm going to let Ms. Parento talk about. She's very excited. But that's going to enhance the role of our ESOL liaisons. There's some, we're bogged down in some paperwork, and Ms. Parento has envisioned a way to release that, which then allows you to put your hands on students more, so if you'd like to answer that.
Yeah, we are very excited about elevation. It's an online platform that has a three-prong approach to supporting our students. One is fully dedicated to professional learning, self-paced modules for teachers and liaisons. We've been very focused on building up our ESOL liaison cadre, so that they can have all the supports they need to support others. And that includes instructional strategies and coaching, and coaching teachers within their schools. So we're very excited. We've utilized a lot of grants to actually fund professional learning for our liaisons. That really helps them be the, be the knowledge holder and knowledge sharer with the teachers. The best part of elevation for me is the compliance piece. It takes, it's going to change the way of work for our ESOL liaisons. I was pretty clear, I think, when we presented our plan for the division, I want, I want school-based people working with kids. You're in there every day, I don't want you in an office with paperwork. It's very important that you're working with teachers and students, and so taking that lift off of them is well worth the fund for elevation, because it releases them a lot more to be able to do the work that matters within the schools. So we've rolled out elevation this year just to liaisons at school, so they can really be the champion for it, and really understand it and love it and know the impact of it, so that they can champion that program next year to teachers. So teachers haven't seen it quite yet.
I was going to say, what's the feedback? So they haven't seen it yet, teacher?
No. Liaisons have seen it, they love it. Liaisons have shared it with their administrators who have reached out, like, can you show me more? Tell me, tell me more reports. So instead of having to go in to Acxiom and to Focus and to find all of these different pieces of paperwork and documentation for these students, it's all right there on a homepage.
Awesome.
It tells you what day things are due, it tells you what compliance pieces are overdue or coming up. So it really streamlines, streamlines the work process for liaison, so it really releases them a lot more to do the work that matters.
That's excellent. She's also championed another project, I'm going to brag on you a little bit more, using Title III dollars, which is funding that we get for that specific student group, but really re-looking at that budget in partnership with Ms. D'Souza to free up dollars to fund projects to, again, support students. And so we were able to fund multiple schools with additional tutoring after school for teachers that wanted and needed to take the time with those kids and get that compensation. So we do have multiple schools that are doing that right now.
Awesome. Well, I'm excited to hear about the resource allocation that we're, you know, putting an additional buffer there, because as we've scratched the surface, I would hate to see us lose that momentum, so I couldn't be more excited about that. And then my final question was, how frequent or how common, and that's a kind of a loaded question, so I apologize, but I just have no concept of, are we getting, you know, what that looks like as far as...
At the high school level, that's, it's very minimal. The majority of our incoming L students come to us at the elementary school. That's just typically what we see. We do, this year, less than five high school students have come to us with interrupted education, probably even less than three, I would venture to say. So it's rare, it's not something that we see often, and we really do a lot of digging and some background on how we can best support those kids and put them where they're going to get the best success for the time that we have left with them.
Excellent. Well, I am very excited again to see our focus on this, to elevate those students and look at the opportunity. And then the final piece is, as we look at staffing, I know from the HR component, we talked about this before too, and that collaboration of how we can fill those spots. So whatever we can do as a board to help support your efforts, let us know. Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
Welcome aboard, Mrs. Parento. I'm so thrilled personally to see you here, and I know that it's going to end with great outcomes for our ELL students, and those have been a subgroup of students that I think really do need our care and attention. And so I'm just, I'm very pleased to have you on board doing that work. I was curious about how many of our general ed teachers are taking advantage of some of these new professional learning opportunities, because as you said, you know, our ELL students are all in those classes, and every teacher is an ESOL teacher. So if you could talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So our priority this year was to really grow up our ESOL liaisons and let them do some job-embedded training with teachers at the school. We know it's very hard to get teachers out to provide professional learning and training to them right now. So we've worked monthly with our ESOL liaisons to give them some turnkey things they can take back to their building. We have not had FaceTime with our teachers yet. It is a plan that we're developing, and it's a, it's in progress, but that is, that is a lift for the department.
In addition to that, we try not to make it just about one thing. Again, because when we have teachers, we have to really co-mingle a lot of these efforts. So literacy efforts embedded with ESOL strategies, embedded with ESE strategies within our curriculum frameworks and our supplemental resources, because it's all integrated, and when we silo it out, it's a much, then people have to put it together. So we try to deliver that in a package deal. Now, if there is some outstanding massive issues, which we did have for a period of time in ESE, you got to pivot and isolate that. But right now, it's coming in very cohesive, and then when we look at what we need to do after growing that, that leadership team, the ESOL liaisons, well, we can do more. But starting there is what we've, that was our initial approach. Yeah.
Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you. Thank you for all the work. And Mr. Connor, thank you for looking at those Title I schools at the elementary and their resources, not waiting until after-school starts to not take anything away. Because there's two people in this room that have a big history with ELL. And Mrs. Rubenstein and I worked together at Southside many, many years ago, and at that time, I was the counselor, and I was also the ELL liaison. So trying to balance those two and get to everything, you've come a long way, and that just benefits our students and our families. Because, you know, if you, historically, you look, you can track, it's like the wave of the students and what language they are bringing with them, and then coming in and trying to learn English. But also what people don't realize is the customs that come. So you have to be aware of the customs. As I've said before, when we had the Vietnamese come, we had kids crying in the cafeteria because they, and I couldn't figure out why. Because they never had used utensils before, and that's all they had. So I still carry that guilt of thinking, oh, gosh, I wish I would have known. So that training piece, I think what you guys are doing is just excellent. So thank you. But I do have two questions. For parents, if, whatever the, whether it's during the daytime or nighttime, weekend, and parents need transportation, are there any, like, we used to give the bus passes for parents that if they could take the bus, or... So do you provide any, is anything provided so parents can get there if they need to or fit a criteria for...
Yeah, the resources you're referring to through Student Support Services is the same, so that would be a teacher or liaison connecting with guidance, social work, or the homeschool liaison saying, hey, they come together on all of those cases in which we can't easily connect and remove that barrier, so that's still in place.
Wraparound, everything, like you said, everything about a child. And I appreciate the questions that Mr. Edwards was asking, and Mrs. Ziegler, everybody, because we forget, in the education world, we kind of know what we're talking about. But the community has no idea what the level of services and education that is provided for our students, whether Gen Ed, ESE, ELL, 504, it's tremendous. So my compliments to all the teachers and staff and everybody, and at the landings for you guys providing that guidance. And then, when you mentioned the after-school tutoring, is transportation, like the busing, is that provided for the students that...
If they're, if they need it, they can request that. We do have that more in the secondary level than we do in the elementary level.
Oh, okay.
But we do have, if that is a need, then that is something they can request from the team, and that we work with transportation, depending on drivers, because that's something we have discussed, that that can become an issue, because you don't have anyone to do that part of the transportation. But we do have activity buses for a variety of programs, and we don't know exactly which schools, as far as the ELL program that we have in place, is using that, but if it was a barrier, they would let us know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, and I'll say it again, I'm so glad that Ruth Rubenstein is on staff to provide that, so thank you, everyone.
And I just echo the same things. Thanks for all the hard work, great presentation. I know that's, you know, something that, especially when we look at every student every day, that's every single student, and we need to make sure, as we know as a board, we've made that our priority. So thank you for an excellent presentation and a great job. So thank you. Superintendent Connor?
Thank you very much. We're going to transition to our last topic, which is a strategic plan update, pillar five, which is centered around communications, government affairs, marketing efforts, as well as our family and community engagement. This primarily is going to cover our communication, government affairs and marketing efforts. As you know, as I was recently quoted in the Herald Tribune around school choice, we have to treat education like a business, and we want to be a top premier competitor for students of Sarasota and families to choose us, because we truly believe we offer a premier educational experience. As a part of that, communications and our marketing efforts are really, really important, as well as what we're doing on the front for government affairs with our legislative delegation and the communications that are happening there. So I'm excited to present the awesome team of communications and government affairs today, led by our Director of Communications, Mr. Craig Miniglia, who is going to present an update on pillar five of our strategic plan.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good afternoon, School Board members. I'm excited here to share where we are as a department today. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce my team that's here with me. I have Mina Azra back here, he's our digital communications manager. I have Kelsey Wheatley over here, who is our digital communications manager. I'm not, that's Mina. Kelsey is our media relations and communications manager. I have Tori, who's our marketing manager, and obviously Chris Parento is here, and our government affairs supervisor. And John Flower is in the back, he's our broadcast engineer and also does, in charge of production over at STC. We also have a few other team members who aren't with us here today, who are working tirelessly to make SES shine in our schools and in our departments. The strategic plan is a working document. There's, the, the strategic plan is a working document, and the intent is to show the progress we've made and where we are working to improve on these action items. Pillar five, Priority One, has twenty-five action items. It's one of the larger ones in uh, in the district, which is good. Um, and uh many of these are connected in one way or another, especially when we're measuring the success of a goal. So as you go through, you may hear the success is tied to many of the things that we've done as they kinda relate to each topic in a different manner. While many of our items have been completed, they still are ongoing over time, and our goal is to revise this plan and continue to address the needs of the district and align with current practices and policies. The strategic plan is a document of priorities and is a fraction of the day-to-day work that our team accomplishes. So stra- strategy one, five point one one, was to revamp and enhance the school district's digital presence, including the website, social media platforms, to ensure user-friendly, up-to-date and accessible information for all stakeholders. In April of twenty twenty-four, we launched the new district's school website, including STC, which are fully translatable. We added AI-driven search capabilities that respond to both voice and text inputs. Additionally, we converted over three hundred policies to HTML webpages, making them searchable by Word and translatable into over a hundred and thirty languages. Coinciding with the website launch, the team introduced a revamped SCS mobile app, which provides families and staff with easy access to school lunch menus, district-wide updates and other essential tools. These enhancements have made it easier than ever for stakeholders to stay informed and connected whether home or on the go. Pillar five, strategy one continued here. We've introduced a new social media campaign titled Behind the Scenes and Teacher Tuesday, which we're ongoing from last year, to highlight the work of our amazing classified and instructional staff. They have both been very popular amongst our community and they have proven to be an amazing source of positivity. We also trained all school's social media personnel on school board policies, guidelines and best practices and platform-specific strategies to increase their school's visibility. So since August of twenty twenty-four, on the two programs I just talked about, Team Behind the Scenes and Teacher Tuesday, we've had an enormous four hundred and seventy-five thousand interactions and thirty-four thousand engagements. So to measure the success, we can look at our target from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty, our target, our baseline, what we did in twenty-three, twenty-four baseline and twenty-four, twenty-five. So you can see in twenty-two, twenty-three, the website hits were at around nine million, five hundred thousand. And twenty-three, twenty-four, we've updated those to over eleven million, and currently we're at twelve million, three hundred and eighty-eight to the website. The social media rate is eight point three. In twenty-two, twenty-three, it's climbed a full percentage rate, which is absolutely phenomenal, to nine point three. And we're currently sitting at nine point four. So the, the strategic plan fits directly into some of the key performance indicators that we'll talk about later in the scorecard. So further to uh yeah, and uh in twenty twenty-four, uh strategy two, we, in partnership with IT, we launched Rooms, a two-way communication app that can be translated into a hundred and thirty languages simultaneously. What that means is whatever the, the stakeholder has their phone set up to, the language will come into that language. So there's no set my phone to this language or not. So um this technology enables instant messaging between staff, students and guardians with email alerts sent whenever a teacher sends a message. So not only you get it on the phone, later in the day you'll get an email that says you got a message in your rooms. The vendor continually makes updates to this software based on our recommendations to improve usabilitys. Now, we know it's not perfect, but we have a very strong tie with this vendor, and we're on the phone with them every week talking about changes that be made to all of their platforms. And that's been a very positive situation. To give you a little numbers around the Rooms and alerts data, to date, currently we have four hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred messages that have been sent from our classrooms or coaches. Over twenty-five thousand guardians logged into the system, a total of thirty-three thousand app downloads and more than ten thousand classrooms are active in the platform. That's about eighty percent of our classrooms. An added benefit is that all communications are backed up and retrievable from a single source, making record retrieval more cost-effective. This also adds an additional layer of protection to our families and staff. For comparison, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had two hundred, three hundred and twenty-four thousand and eight hundred remind messages, which is kind of a competitor to this. And, and then alerts and robocalls and texts this year were just under eleven thousand to date. Action three, in July twenty twenty-four, we updated our crisis communication plan to incorporate student services and threat management protocols. The revised plan outlines clear procedures for immediate action during a crisis, specifically who is responsible and what steps should be taken. Item four, which is complete, proactively, proactively seek opportunities to expand the district's visibility and media highlighting innovative programs, achievements and initiatives that showcase the district's commitment to excellence and community engagement. The Media Relations Team is continually maximizing opportunities to tell great stories of Sarasota County schools. From proactively pitching story ideas and media opportunities, to responding to inbound requests for interviews and background information, the Media Relations Team recognizes that even the simplest of engagements can yield quality results, further building the positive reputation of our school district. So between twenty-three and twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five this current year, you can kinda see the numbers. What's astonishing here is when you get to the third columns where you see the interaction, content interactions. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had sixteen point five billion content interactions. That means Sarasota County schools showed up all over the world somewhere that many times, with the advertising value equivalently of over a hundred and fifty-two billion dollars if we had to pay for those acknowledgements. Currently, right now, we're sitting at eighteen point four billion content interactions. Although media hits are lower, that just means that bigger publications are covering what we're sending and what they're receiving and what they're asking about, which was an advertca- advertising value of equivalency of a hundred and seventy billion. Now, those are fictitious numbers. Obviously, we're not gonna get that money, but it's something that's used in advertising quite frequently to judge, is your message out there? Whether it's good or bad, you know, good or bad gets out there. Publicity is always a good thing. Strategy five is complete. Introduce a strategic marketing initiative to elevate the district's brand, emphasizing unique strengths and successes to attract and retain students in increasingly competitive educational landscape. Again, in January of twenty twenty-four, communications launched a direct mailing and digital marketing campaign designed to attract families of students who are not enrolled in traditional public schools. We also in twenty-six, thirty, we also in the same timeframe and did the Millet referendum in twenty-six through thirty, uh, which also is added to this initiative. So a few examples of how we're highlighting our district's programs and initiatives through media is to increase district's visibility and showcase how committed we are to excellence. So we've done school choice ads throughout this campaign cycle with ABC seven. We've also had material on NISH. We've sent explainer videos out. We send them to all our constituents. We send them to the media. They're out everywhere. They're on our website. They're on our homepages. So success measurements, again, in twenty-two, twenty, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we received sixteen hundred new applications as a result of the campaign and saw a nine percent enrollment increase. In twenty-four, twenty-five, we received the campaign. We revised the campaign and added streaming television ads and web banner ads through ABC seven. This resulted in an increase of what, at the time I built this PowerPoint, and we put this together with six hundred applications, but I just got word today from Millie Wheeler that we are at twenty-eight hundred, not twenty-two hundred. So some of those will be duplicate because some people will apply to three schools at a time. But we're talking about a significant rise by marketing. And the way we did this marketing, why I scripted this is so I won't do what I'm doing right now, but I feel it's important to get down in the weeds. We did a geofence marketing campaign where we only marketed to people who had school aid kids in their house. We sent streaming ads to them. And uh we put it around a fence of you go to a mall, you'll get a pop-up. You go here, you get that. We drove, I, I forget the exact number, but I think it was like ninety thousand people to the website based on that ad campaign. So marketing works, it just costs money, but uh it works. Um, if the applications hold true, our FT increase would be astronomical. They all don't hold true. Some of the students are already here. We get that and they're choicing to a neighboring school. Alls we need is one, and it pays for the entire campaign that we did. So. The second campaign was the Millet referendum. It passed at eighty-five percent, the highest in Florida. We sent ten thousand informational cards uh distributed to libraries and whatnot, and had some of the community members help send those cards out for us. Over two hundred web and social graphics were created. We held six community forums and digital toolkits were shared with all principals. Actions, action six is complete. Create an annual schedule for the trading spaces with Terry segment to showcase district job roles and staff. The annual schedule fluctuates based on the superintendent's schedule, and program topics, program topics have been identified six months in advance. We completed eight episodes to date. The ninth one will air this week, and uh it's showcasing BJ over at Sarasota High School as an athletic director. We have forty-three thousand views on this series so far, ninety-two thousand impressions and six hundred and twenty engagements. Part of the measurement is to see the feedback. The series has proven to be very successful to our community. Recruitment efforts have also given the superintendent an inside look at each job class that he shadows, which helps in making decisions when we're in the cabinet, because he's actually seen what a nurse does and sees that we can't cut nurses because, oh my gosh, they're a valuable asset. So it's a different perspective that most school districts don't get to see how that works. And he takes the time to do that, so we're very thankful for that. And if you, you can see these comments here from Nurse Emily is the best. Thank you, Mr. Tim. We love this. So, and this is just a little snippet of over, like I said, six hundred that come in when these things happen. Action seven is complete. Create an annual schedule for the Intuned Podcast to showcase district initiatives. An annual podcast schedule has been set up, but it's flexible too, to change for special editions or hot topics. The current production is distributed in multiple languages. And when I say a hot topic, like in the beginning of the year, we were worried about the policing. So we had all of the sheriffs and chiefs of police come in and do a podcast roundtable segment, overwhelmingly popular. And uh that's what I mean when we, we might interrupt our regularly scheduled program to fit in something that is very important topic of the day. Uh, the success measure is, is uh the listener statistics and engagement. So in, in YouTube, we have uh is our main platform right now. In English, we've had fourteen thousand and sixty-seven views, Spanish four hundred and fifty-nine views, Russian five hundred and thirty-three views. For total views of fifteen thousand and fifty-nine, with the average view for a podcast, six hundred and twenty-seven. Now, you might think, oh, that's not that big. That's incredible for an educational system sitting out a podcast that's twelve minutes on a topic that most people don't care about. So those are pretty big numbers. Um, we're hoping to, uh, we also, these are also available on Spotify and Apple, and that's a growth area for us because we're trying to figure out exactly where those should land and those to pick up more listenership. Eight is also completed. Uh, strategic action eight, tailor engagement strategies to provide unique and relevant content for the Spanish-speaking community. All website content and two-way communications are translated into Spanish. Additionally, we've translated numerous flyers, videos and podcasts to Spanish as well. Satisfaction surveys are being deployed in, later in twenty twenty-five to see how that's all working. And in addition, we're translating all videos relevant to the ELL department into five languages. When I say relevant, when we're talking about food nutrition services, and we're talking about how to register, all the videos that we've created or have been created around that department are now gonna be translated into five languages. It's gonna be Spanish, Russian, Ukrainian, Brazil, Portuguese and Haitian Creole. Success measures here, as you can see, there's some flyers here that we've done and we've, the Focus Portal is also translatable into the languages and the website obviously is translatable in the app. But in our climate survey, we do a Spanish-speaking survey that comes out of the IT department, or actually it was uh research in uh Denise's department. Now, Mr. Ben Winger's department, but it comes out of there. And the question was, this, this school communicates school policies and procedures clearly to parents and guardians. Now, mind you, this was just in Spanish to Spanish speakers. So four hundred and seventy-five people highly agreed or agreed, twenty-four disagreed, and thirty-two weren't sure how to answer it. So there was only five hundred and thirty-one respondents. So the key is not, is it working? The key is how do we get them to respond to the survey? So that is a good insight for us to say, okay, some people are taking this survey. How do we get more people? And that will be through help with Ms. O'Day and her principals to say, let's spread this survey, make sure your Spanish-speaking communities are taking the survey, which should tell us a little bit more on how we're getting to that point. Action nine is complete. Provide school board members with frequent updates on district initiatives to communicate with their constituents. Prior to February twenty twenty-five, we sent a school board briefing with highlights from the district each month. In February, we launched the new In Touch Community Newsletter with insightful articles and events happening in our schools. The newsletter is a, full of information and geared towards staff and families in the community. Ten is also complete. Establish coffee with Connor forums to discuss state of schools with the community. The first event was held in July of twenty twenty-four here at the landings, and the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. The second event was held in September twenty twenty-four in Northport at the library connected to STC. And the next event is scheduled for March twelfth at the Fruitville Library at ten thirty. What's really cool about this is where we get an average of thirty participants at each one. It's a two-way dialogue between the superintendent and a, a, a variety of parents and community stakeholder members. And our food nutrition services team caters the event with coffee and light snacks. So it's, it's really a high-class situation. Uh, our team goes out, puts tablecloths down, so it's not like you're walking into a, you know, hard chairs and everything. We dress it up so it, they feel welcome. And uh, and I think it goes a long way with our community that we, we put that handshake out there. Strategic action eleven is in progress. Organize an annual state of schools presentation, leveraging community partnerships to update stakeholders on progress and plans. One of the reasons for launching the In Touch Newsletter was to better connect with our greater community and keep them updated on our district happenings. In addition, we plan to hold a state of schools in September, where we can showcase some of our accomplishments along with some of our singers, our dancers and programs and uh the progress that we're making as a school district. That will also be open to the media. And uh obviously, any community member can come to that. It is the state of schools. And uh we're hoping to have that at a big venue and get that sponsored so that is a, it's a, it's a big deal. Action twelve is in progress. Develop a communication style guide for school and district leaders that is inclusive, accounting for translation services and accessibility. And sometimes I say in progress, it's coinciding with ongoing, okay? Cause there's a lot that's taking place. So Language Line, which we've taken over, is now available at all traditional schools. Digital toolkits were shared in August of twenty-four. Support material is delivered in September of twenty-four, and quarterly, quarterly trainings are currently underway. The district's style guide is available on the website for all employees to use. It includes colors, logos, fonts and PowerPoint templates. We continue to support schools with Language Line translation from now until forever. We've taken that program over. Priority five, uh, the, to continue on with this, in addition, we have seven school style guides complete. And they're available on the school sites for all stakeholders to use, including colors, logos, fonts and slogans. Seven out of forty. Uh, we'd be further along, but things like the strategic plan crop up. They build this PowerPoint, no. But we're, we're working really diligently. We have like nine other that are in draft mode right now, and we hope by the end of twenty twenty-five, they'll all be done. Strategic action thirteen, identify and train marketing leads in each school to effectively use a school marketing toolkit and implement effective marketing strategies. This is also in progress. We train social media leads at each site with guidelines on how to use social media platforms correctly. This is ongoing as new employees take these, take on these responsibilities. All schools have been trained to date. Additionally, materials on how to use their website, marquee, newsletters, branded style guide and et cetera to better position themselves in the marketplace will commence by the end of this year. Item fourteen is complete. Schedule and facilitate engagements with policymakers to foster relationships and advocate, advocate for the district's interest. So we're proud to say that five of the seven priorities last school year were addressed in the legislative session. So far, bills have been filed relating to five out of the six priorities this year. Since October, the Superintendent and Department of Government Affairs have had twenty different meetings with local and state officials, including the governor, the governor's office, Commissioner Diaz, other Florida Department of Education officials, local delegation, education committee chairs and other influential state legislators to discuss priorities, accomplishments and their areas of importance to Sarasota County schools. This must, this is more than double the time spent last year, includes a significant increase in the leadership engagements. This number does not include weekly check-in calls and bills discussed with our lobbyists or legislator meetings they are having on our behalf. Fifteen is complete, define the district's legislative priorities in collaboration with the school board and superintendent. Development of the district's legislative priorities began in June of twenty twenty-four, about six weeks after the twenty twenty-four legislative session ended. A draft of these priorities was presented to the school board at the August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four workshop and approved at the superintendent, at the, approved at the September third, twenty twenty-four board meeting. We created a one-page flyer for Capital City with specific details to engage legislators on Sarasota County school priorities. Following the approval, one-page handouts as well as double-sided cards were printed for board members, district leaders, legislators and our lobbyists to distribute in their meetings. To measure some of the successes here, we currently sent out twelve legislative updates since November twenty twenty-four and currently tracking over a hundred and eighty new bills that were put in and filed as late as Friday last week. Only one item on our priority list of this year did not receive a bill to address it, and that's the construction cost, which was not included as a priority this year by legislators. But we are very optimistic it will gain some traction and be reconsidered next year. Strategic, Strategic Action Sixteen is in progress, establish quarterly roundtables with appropriate support for these priorities at local, state and federal levels, ensuring unified approach to advocacy. In an election year, it is very difficult to hit quarterly meetings. Only time a group meeting is feasible is in the delegation meeting in November and December. The Department of Government Affairs meets monthly with local elected officials and local leaders to discuss updates on district priorities and initiatives. This includes ways to collaborate on mutually beneficial items that the district is focused on so we can use our reach and influence to advocate with the same message. Very important meetings that are held monthly. Seventeen is in progress, share the district impact and achievement with elected officials to maintain visibility and support by creating the Sarasota County Source Communication Plan to include our Sarasota County School Source Showcase Social Media Initiative. Planning on an achievement, we are planning on an achievement briefing to digitally send to legislators in July. The district's impacts and achievements are shared at monthly meetings with local affect, local elected officials and municipal leaders. Additionally, we are planning a quarterly or bi-annually message to our local delegation members highlighting district accomplishments, like things like grad rates, school grades, recognitions, et cetera, to keep them engaged and up to date with what's happening here in Sarasota. Eighteen is complete, formulate a detailed communication and marketing plan with defined goals to be reviewed annually. I have a bound copy here for you today that I'll give you after this. Uh, you also received a digital flip book from the superintendent, I believe, uh, several weeks ago. And it talks about communications, government affairs overview from the previous year. The overview encompasses all communication, all communication metrics for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. It's all, and we have also created marketing plans for the In Touch Newsletter, ABC Seven, Niche and other district events like recruitment needs. Strategic Action Nineteen is in progress, complete comprehensive toolkits for schools to embrace their recruitment efforts, including promotional materials, guidelines for open houses and strategies for engaging with prospective families. We created new brochures for each school site showcasing their programs. We have added school-specific videos when available to each of their websites that showcase their programs and we are continually working with schools to increase their marketability. So, uh, measure success here, all schools have received over one thousand of those brochures that they can have at their front desk and send out to families as they come in to inquire about the school. Uh, we have had social media and marketing trainings this year and they are ongoing. Again, we also record these trainings so that people can view them at their own time when they can't meet one of our virtual meetings. Uh, the pictures here are example of our recent marketing campaigns. So we did the School Choice TV ad, which is here, and then we also now have moved on to HR recruitment TV ads and we've done job fair posters and, and also flyers and those have all been put out in multiple languages. Strategic Plan Twenty is complete, set tangible targets for websites and social media usage aiming to increase engagement and reach. Review the twenty-three, twenty-four school year analytics and develop, develop social media strategies to meet the goals, including launching the team behind the scene and, and media campaign bringing and, and continuing the Teacher Tuesday and increasing focus on short-form reels. We are trying to move away from the long four-minute videos and go into more one-minute, one-twenty videos, which could get much bigger punch and much bigger view. So far this year, we've had five million impressions with this strategy and, uh, let's move over here so we can talk here about some of the targets that we had and some of the results. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, the websites were at nine point six and twenty-three, twenty-four, eleven point two. We've talked about some of these metrics earlier, nine percent social media engagement to nine point three social engagement rate here and so forth on, you can see the climb. What's important for you to know here as the industry standard or standard in any industry is between three to five percent for a social media engagement rate, three to five percent. Anything above eight is considered phenomenal. We are going to go well above ten this year. We still have four months. So that is a, a accomplishment not only to the marketing team at Torrey, but to the whole unit here, creating the stuff that is really drawing people to look at and share. Strategic Action Twenty-One, create this SES Showcase to advertise and communicate the opportunities our schools offer by partnering with media outlets to highlight success stories aiming to enhance our image and community engagement. The media relations team continues to seize opportunities to highlight the success stories Sarasota County schools by proactively pitching story ideas and media opportunities as well as responding to incoming requests for interviews and background information. The team understands that even the smallest interaction can generate meaningful outcomes, further enhancing the school district's positive reputation. This year, we have had two hundred and fifty-seven media inquiries and sent sixty-four press releases and also sent eighty-eight alert messages. We currently partner with ABC Seven for chalkboard champion segments. While we continue to pitch compelling stories, we recognize that we cannot control the final coverage. And I gotta put this down a little bit. The Source Showcase will be bi-annual showcasing district achievements to legislators and government officials. Locally, we are utilizing the In Touch Newsletter and the State of Schools schedule, like I said before, in September. Strategic Twenty-Two is complete, implement an efficient internal communication strategy to keep staff informed and engaged. This action actually happens throughout the entire strategic plan. We created and maintained the Administrator Weekly Newsletter, AWN, with distribution to all administrators and their AAs. This document shares action items and informational items for schools and departments. All additions are searchable and archived. Weekly emails are sent to the department heads to collect content information and there have been sixty-four additions created and sent and one thousand one hundred and forty documents shared with over seventy-two thousand views. In addition, we have built and scheduled the launch of the Teacher Weekly Newsletter, TWN, for distribution in April of this year. So measures of success, the In Touch Newsletter has a lot of pertinent information for staff and parents and community members. Also, we've partnered, or not really partnered, IT also sends out a weekly email thumb drive Thursday to all of our staff with helpful hints on how to navigate technology, whether it's software or hardware, which does very well. And I will say this, on the In Touch, we launched our first magazine, uh, last month and while it had an open rate of fifty percent of the people we sent it to, which was pretty high, it garnered, uh, like, uh, two hundred and fifty so engagements, two hundred and forty, this last one in twenty-four hours already had over eight hundred. So like anything else, people have to know it, they have to see it on a repeated basis and then they're going to go to it. It's full of unbelievable items and while it is a big lift for the department, it is so great to hear community members send emails and say, this is what we needed. This is great because they feel like they're in touch with what we're actually doing now. Twenty-three is complete, we launched the new district and school websites, including STC, which we talked about being fully translated. We launched Thrill Share Rooms, a two-way communication app with simultaneously translates into again, a hundred and thirty languages. We converted over, we converted and created over three hundred policies to our HTML webpages, making them searchable by Word, translated into all languages. Language Line is now available at all traditional schools, digital toolkits shared in August, which we talked about. Support materials were delivered in September of twenty-four and quarterly trainings are underway. Uh, additionally, we have translated numerous flyers, videos and podcasts to, uh, throughout the district for many departments into other languages. This next slide I'm going to show you is very interesting. Another way we track data is through Google Analytics, Analytics to see who's actually visiting our site and what their, uh, operating system or setup as. So what we're seeing is a little bit of a drop-off from last year by language, but there's still three and a half months to go. We attribute some of the drop-off to the new website being more efficient and highly searchable with AI searching features versus the old site, which was highly navigable. The Rooms app may also be cannibalizing some of the hits, the web due to the ability to translate instantly, which they can get it right on their phone and not have to go to the web. If you look at these two comparisons here, after a full year, we had thirty-two thousand Spanish speakers, which is not part of this thing, but I just want to show you in comparison to this year, twenty-two, three hundred Spanish people who had their operating setup coming to our site. The, the other seventy-five percent of the language, Russians, Portuguese and Chinese, are juxtaposing between numbers. Russians down about a thousand, that could change over the next four months. Chi, China has actually gone up and, uh, taken a twenty-five percent versus eighteen percent role and then Portuguese has also, uh, gone up a little bit. So the big three are still there. China is new to the district seeing this and we have to dig a little deeper with our schools to find out what the population grab is. Is this just outside people? Again, we're advertising, we have, uh, marketing campaigns on Niche, which is a worldwide campaign for best schools. So when people are searching best schools in Florida, we're the number one hit that pops up. And so there could be people from Asia, there could be anywhere that are looking at these things and why it's coming in. So these are just data points that help us trigger what languages we should be doing so that we don't spend a lot of resources doing a language that is only have a one-off or a two-off. We maybe convert that page and let them translate to the website so they can get the information. And just for, just for sake, over a million people have English that have been to the website. So, uh, measures of success here, we've translated thirty-four videos. The average view duration, which is very high for school videos, at one minute, twenty seconds. We've had three language line trainings, twenty participants per training or more. We have calls completed twenty-seven hundred with thirty-one thousand minutes of talking, twelve-minute average duration and Spanish is still the number one. And again, the average view time doubled from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. Strategic Twenty-Four is complete, regularly conduct surveys to measure parental understanding and information dissemination effectiveness with the goal of reaching ninety-six positive feedback. I obviously didn't put that number in there, our superintendent put ninety-six percent. So it will, it will take multiple years for us to achieve ninety-six approval rating, but we're up to the task. Uh, the new launch of the organizational excellence or, and their survey tools will better position communications to succeed. But we did get a ninety-two percent positive feedback from the school leaders here with an average rating of four point six out of five. Our highest ranking was four point eight and we ranked four point four higher in all categories that were surveyed. So more success for measures here. Additionally, data, additional data points will be available with the administration of the employee climate survey scheduled for later this year. And in addition, we conduct site surveys when there is a principal opening to help understand what the stakeholders from that community want, as well as to help to transition to the new principal so they have some idea of what they're coming into. Action Twenty-Five is in progress, develop partnerships with real estate agencies to provide Sarasota County public schools with swag bags to be shared with new families moving into the area, providing resources to enroll in one of our public schools. Currently, we have delivered some district marketing materials to enhance awareness of Sarasota County schools. They are in schools, county libraries and a few realtors and builders. We currently do not have a budget for swag items. Uh, we have launched the marketing campaign In Touch, which has the opportunity to raise money, so hopefully down the line, we will be able to provide different marketing avenues, more pertinent ad buys and possibly swag items. So our report card in the strategic plan, so what we're looking at here on this slide is the baseline that was set in twenty-two, twenty-three, the target for twenty-three, twenty-four and what we did in twenty-three, twenty-four. So media exposures, print and broadcast went up, uh, district website engagement went up, social media engagement rate went up, district school mass messaging is, uh, went down and that's also, we, we instituted the new alerts halfway through the year. But I will tell you that we have a goal from our department is not to overpower the messaging from the district because we really want the schools to be in touch. The closer you are to the classroom, the more apt you're going to listen to the message. So we don't want message fatigue. So we're intentionally trying not to send as many messages as a district and push back to the schools to send those messages, whether we write them or not. The goal is for them to come from the schools. And increase open enrollment participation. The target was fourteen hundred, we did sixteen hundred last year. If we move on, we've been, again, like I said, trying to decrease the amount of mass messaging sent out to avoid the fatigue. Uh, messages decline based on cannibalism of other possible reasons. Messages have declined as the possible cannibalization from different avenues like the new app and addition of rooms. And these numbers have, the numbers with plus signs mean that we still have three and a half months to go. But, uh, what I'm most proud of is the last campaign we did, which was the open enrollment. Our target was sixteen hundred, even though it says fourteen hundred here, because that's what we did last year, and we're sitting at twenty-eight hundred right now. So that, that's incredible. That, that is just, if you'd have asked me, would that have happened with this campaign? I'd have said, no, we'll be lucky if we get two thousand. When the twenty-two number came in, I was like, well, that's pretty good. And then twenty-eight is crazy. So national awards, uh, this is not part of the strategic plan, but it's something you also be aware, aware of. Every, every submitted entry we've put in, we've won the highest in the category. So our two marketing campaigns that went in last year, the School Choice Open Enrollment, which we revamped this year, won the highest level gold award. And then our SES Cares Recognition Program also won a gold achievement award, national award. Our video series that we put in, uh, singles, single video and video series have all won awards at the highest level of excellence. And with that, our strategic plan overview progresses, all actions have been completed or in progress or planned. We've completed seventeen of the twenty-five of all of the actions. And even though they're completed, they're ongoing, so it's not like we can add more actions, we can just keep maintaining the process. And with that, every student, every day, and I'll try to answer your questions and I have a team here full of answers if I can.
Ms. Sigler?
Well, I'm gushing because I just really, I am so impressed, um, just over the, a decade to see the transition and it's not lost on me. You know, I, I believe all of you agree with this and, and it's something I've felt strongly about is that our ability to communicate really is, if you look at any issue in the past, if we, it almost would have been averted if our ability to communicate or get in front of it. And we didn't really have the right systems in place or, you know, the technology was kind of, we, it was moving mover faster than we had a staff that was able to do it. So to look to where we are now, it's not just that we're fulfilling a need, we're exceeding it to extraordinary proportions. It's A-plus all the way around. I mean, the templatizing for our district, for our schools is extraordinary for them to be able to brand and market and seamlessly do that because that's not their core focus. Um, love that. I love just looking at the engagement, but I have, I have the pleasure of being able to work with school board members across the country and this topic recently came up and I had them come to our website because it's come a long way. I mean, I think Pormina used to get beat up all the time about the website. Um, and you know, there's just so much information, but it wasn't structured and the fact that you guys turned that around, how, three months? I, is unbelievable and, and I've worked for larger organizations that had much more bandwidth in, in, from a human capital standpoint and it didn't ever, I have sometimes, I don't think it ever got done properly. So my hat's off to you, but to, to the feedback I've received from people in various counties, large and small, um, has been just overwhelmingly positive and, and using us as a model. I, I, I think that, again, I could gush all day. Um, one question, I know we talked about this a little bit earlier, but, and I'm not, I know enough to be dangerous, but when I look at some of the engagements and I know there's different thresholds based on the platform, but as we seek out different areas to, you know, the monetization aspect of YouTube or X or whatever, I know there's different, is that something, are we taking advantage of that? Is that something we can take advantage of? I'm looking right, yeah, exactly.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that is something that's kind of got put on our radar this year is if we can monetize our
Yeah, so that is something that's kind of got put on our radar this year is if we can monetize our YouTube. Some of our content is restricted because some of it we say it's made for kids.
I was wondering that, okay.
We have other restrictions on it. You also have to meet a certain threshold for your YouTube channel in order to be eligible to monetize it. So we're working to reach those minimum thresholds and also trying to figure out how we can still get our content to everybody, monetize it, but still allow it to be played in schools if needed.
Perfect. That was my question. I didn't know what the what the rules were, but I want to, I think we have all the, you know, the interesting content. And really, that's not easy to do under a school district. I know we eat, breathe, sleep it all the time, but to see that level of engagement and it's just really starting to take off, right? So if there is a way for us to optimize the monetization, let's do it. So really, great job, everyone. You guys are an amazing team. I'm really, 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 really impressed. So thanks for all that you do.
Ms. Marinelli?
Thank you. I'm I'm very impressed. I I would, that is a lot of work. I mean, no wonder you guys get tired.
My team's not happy with me right now, so please move on to the next topic.
But I think it
This was supposed to happen in April.
It's it's wonderful. So thank you all. And, you know, being out in the community, you you can tell that people are becoming much more aware. And like Superintendent Connor says, we want to be everybody's first choice. And to get that information and correct information out of what's going on in our schools. Because you know, once something goes out that's incorrect, it takes a tremendous amount of time to undo that. So I appreciate everything and I have to say, the one that I get the most feedback on is Mr. Connors doing, going, visiting the schools. The community just loves to look at him and to see what he's doing. So the Trading Places is very, very popular and and the magazine. So I I just, thank you. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Ms. Parker?
You definitely make us look good. Thank you. Thank you very much. And you can add an extra two messages to your rooms count because while I was sitting here, I informed my child's teacher that she would be staying late for Lego Club. So thank you for that. Truly, that 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 ability to reach your child's teacher quickly and not just from a safety standpoint, but a just an everyday standpoint, it makes a huge difference, huge difference. So thank you. And I'm sure that the glitches with that will just continue to get worked out over time. And I've seen already some of the glitchier things get a little smoother. The the only thing I I wonder about and I hear from other folks, is there a plan to merge like the rooms app with the portal? Having the two different apps can sometimes be a little bit tricky. And also, is there a way to make it easier to like submit an absence note, for example? I know you can do that on the website and I'm not completely, you know, useless, but it's very difficult.
Some of those things, I'll take up with our leader of IT. But as far as the, we have had conversations, Joe and I have had conversations and we've had it with the vendor on how we can get the the things to show up in the app. The problem is just proprietary, the word I'm looking for, proprietary language that doesn't allow for them to share some of this and that. But they're both getting, they're both very popular apps and they're, I think the aptegy stuff is used in over almost six thousand school districts in the country and Focus is used in just as many. So eventually they'll have to come together with a way that we can share that information, even if it's just the thing sitting in one app that they can click on. And also you got to be careful with people being pushed outside of something. So if I'm in one app and I go here and now I'm in something different, what happened? And then you have single sign-on issues that how do I get into this? Now I got to sign in. So we have talked about it, we'll continue to talk and like Joe knows, I think it's weekly or every two weeks now, we meet with aptegy and their development people to tell them what we want. And I'll give you an example, the newsletter, the first newsletter went out and they had a glitch in their system where you had to click it twice. We called them and said, this is not going to happen, this can't happen. And within twenty-four hours, they fixed it. That's pretty amazing. It's a place that has six thousand districts. So they're listening. We had their chief customer service person, one of the older owners before they sold it, was in our conference room talking to us. And so it is, it's a pretty good relationship we have. As far as the attendance thing, attendance is tough. I recommend you send your kid to school.
I'm trying.
Joe can respond to that.
Joe will respond.
Yes, this has been a request that we've heard repeatedly. We've shared that with Focus. They have confirmed it is on their development path through the app. So we're waiting on which release that'll be in, but that is in the foreseeable future.
That's very exciting for all of us. Thank you. And then may I ask one more question? When we look at our legislative priorities, I know in our previous board meeting, we heard a lot from the community about just being unsettled about what's going on nationally and and all of that, we don't have control over. But in terms of the way that we advocate and how we advocate, I was I was looking at our legislative priorities and I I think people would be really encouraged if they took the time to read through because a lot of what they're asking for, we are advocating for at the state level and at the local level. And I just wonder if you would maybe be able to give us just a little snapshot of where we are with our advocacy work and and what we're looking at, Mr. Parento. Thank you.
Absolutely. And just because something's not on our legislative agenda doesn't mean that it's not something that we're advocating for or advocating against at the state level. There are, as Mr. Miniglia said, over a hundred and eighty education-related bills that have been filed. And I've got them all in a spreadsheet, ones that we support, ones that we oppose. And a lot of these bills have multiple components to them where there might be pieces that we like and pieces that we don't like. So those conversations happen at least twice a week with Capital City. I'm on the phone with them all the time, text messages, emails back and forth, making sure that they know when they're there every single day and they're having these one-on-one meetings on our behalf when we're not there, what our position is on each of these different items. And they also come to me with other conversations that they're having and they're hearing and asking about what those impacts would be to us. Because one of the things that we want to be able to do when we're advocating is provide legislators with what the practical impact of something would be. Not just statewide, but what it would be for us. And if we're able to quantify that and do that on a daily basis for those legislators, it provides those more concrete, real examples of what's in front of them and what it may look like if it if it eventually passes. So those conversations happen at the state level. Capital City just merged with another firm and they have a Washington DC-based office now. So we have that access as well that we work with them on some national issues and and discussing with them what could be coming, things that they're hearing up there that may not even be publicly discussed right now, things that are being publicly discussed so that we can, through the superintendent's direction and the board's direction, take a position that we need to take to make the best interest of the district and those that we serve.
Mr. Edwards?
Thank you. Let me start by saying that I'm grateful for searchable policies. I'm grateful for being able to look at the website in multiple languages. I I know I've said thank you for those things before, but they really do matter. The the first question I have is when when you were all marketing the rooms app, one of the big things was the retrieval of the information. Have you had to utilize that, those, that piece?
Yes, absolutely. It was used almost in the first week and it saved not only enormous amounts of time, but it also was free. That is
That's a big word.
And and when I said earlier in my presentation that it not only is to protect the student, it protects the teacher because there's a lot of falsities that happen unfortunately in our world. And if it happened in a system that we don't have the backend to, we can't exonerate anybody. We have to wait and pay and wait and pay and and this was instant. I got off the phone with Todd Gardner, like I I think rooms was up for one week. And he said, oh, my God, we already have a public records request. I have it in seconds. So it is working and there may be many others that because this is a partnership with IT too. So IT has got part of the backend of this. We're trying to share the resources here. So he has Todd Gardner and Adam, no, Todd Alexander and Adam Gardner. I just combined the two because I talked to them every day. But both of those guys are helping from an ID department with helping, making sure teachers or rooms are set up and making sure that if there's a little glitch here or there, they can get into it and helping fulfill the public records requests.
So there's a reason why I asked that question. I think that we you did a fantastic job of talking about our outreach and our hits and how we're we're in there. But there's a lot of cost containment strategies that are embedded into this process and we're not hearing that. And and that's an important component for us to hear and to share with the public. So maybe in April, no, just kidding. Take a time and list where where the where the money savings has been, where returns on investments have happened, where economies of scale, all those kinds of opportunities where we're leveraging the new technology. Because we always have to, you know, cast votes for millions of dollars being spent. But it's always nice to hear that there's a return on those investments.
And I can tell you right off the bat, from where we were a year ago, we not only decreased our outlay of cash with switching to this vendor, we improved our capabilities. So the monies, while they're similar, they're lower and we added more features. So and we also built in a five-year plan, a three-year plan with two-year tiers, which included the addition of five new schools with no charge. So every time we bring on a new school, they build it and there's no charge.
Another reason why parents want to send their kids to traditional public schools because we spend those dollars saved back in the classrooms.
Absolutely.
So I also want to just point out, I love In Touch. It really takes all of the website and drops it into one place. And the magazine format is brilliant. It's so well done. And I I can't thank you enough for that. When you answered one the question about how there's marketing and advertising capabilities, how are we approaching that? What are we doing about that?
So we twofold. What we did is we in our magazine, as you see, your ad here, you click that. If you click that and fill it out, it'll fill out a smart sheet to us. It'll give us all the information we need. And then we reach back with costs and what, whether you want a full page, half page, quarter page or whatnot. So that that's one avenue. And I have Chris over here, man of many hats, helping me with managing the ad sales portion of the magazine. Now, we know it's going to be a slow roll. We also send out an invitation to all of our CEOs in schools with the ability to be able to advertise in that. And you can imagine that some of the bigger ones have bitten the apple, but they have big companies. So it takes a little bit of time for them to get in. Plus, earlier in the year, we brought earlier last year, we brought a policy to the board to enable us to even do this. So we strategically planned that we had to have a board policy that would allow us to do this. We've gone with our legal team to address what are the roadblocks we need to be careful of. So we've written contract language so that when someone does sign up, they know that it's an educational system. We have the right of first refusal. We don't have to take this. We went into consideration of how you're going to pay for your ad, whether it's all upfront or you're going to pay for it piecemeal. We will take credit cards, but we will charge you the four percent for the credit card fee. And so we we kind of thought it all out. So a smart sheet comes in once they do it and the chain starts there. And then they're contacted almost immediately once we get that with here's the ad sales. And of course, since it is a new publication, there's a published rate and there's a new publication rate. So you have to call to get that.
Well, I would be one, because I know how popular our schools are, hence the passage of the referendum. I might suggest investing in a staff member whose job it is to get out there and find those ads.
Mr. Edwards, I wholeheartedly agree.
I think it's a, I think I think it's an, no, it wasn't a setup. I've just, but I'm a, but that's how I I I get the the return on investment of of that. I think that's a no-brainer, but
Like I always said, I've run businesses my whole life. I've been in education for now ten years. Often time in business, when a company is struggling, the first person to let go is the salesperson. It's like, well, that was really
Yeah, no, no, I would say there's there's a huge opportunity in that in that place. This is my last place. This is something that we banter around all the time about parent development or professional development for parents or parenting skills or any of those kinds of obscure questions that parents might wonder about. Can there be a a place on our website where best practices or books that should be read or any kind of thoughts that we could offer for parents to just go in and research and find great skills?
Absolutely, that can happen. The 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 struggle we have is throughout the district, there are, we don't have the mindset of what every department, every curriculum department, what the questions are. So it's culminating that information, easily build frequently asked questions page, but we have to have content and we can work on that with the team and with the chiefs and say, what are the questions that are coming in and kind of build that? And that's a great idea. We do have frequently asked questions on many different things, especially when we approach back to school. But now that we have the In Touch newsletter, we have a link there that could drive anybody with any questions, go here. So we have avenues now to send people like almost a digital website that comes into your inbox with the things that went out that week or the things we're talking about, like this is literacy learning week month. So this whole edition was on literacy and thanks to Ms. O'Day and her team for giving us some information. We could write these articles and then try to tie all the other things. If you also notice, the schools in this magazine that are being highlighted are the schools that have maybe more seats than other schools. So we're going at making sure that people understand that right there in their community, they have this great school. Here's their all their offerings and also here's a video about that school so you can see it. So there's a lot of thought process that goes into this whole
Well, what I'm really looking at is I hear all the time, I I don't understand how they're teaching math to our kids and I can't help my child with homework. So that that's a piece that that I I would say. I hear all the time, something as silly as this from teachers and school-based administrators, behavioral issues with their children and teachers are, so how can we get some of that information to parents that might want to know, want to be involved, want to try to help, but don't know where to go to seek that information? So it's the information may already be in our schools in and not coming from the parents, but just resources for parents that that we at the school district think they might want to jump on board with. Great, great, great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Sigler?
I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Edwards' comment on the setting Mr. Connor and I have talked about on resources for families was I, you know, whether it be as we build, well, as they, based on their capacity, obviously, that's the hardest part, right? Our teachers trying to give a snapshot of where there are maybe some recommended books. I know that was what I was thinking of when I'm constantly looking for books for my child, having our teachers do something and we can utilize our social media platforms, whether that be in your practice and just seeing this thing out the cuff here. But the the templatizing piece in my mind is such a huge game changer because then that allows that capacity to be built for more creative things to be done. And you just drop it, but you know, whatever it is, if it's a quick video, if that's what they feel comfortable doing or if it's a quick, and again, each school-based process is going to be a little bit different on what that, you know, social media process is. Saying process a lot, but I think there is an opportunity to expand on where we are now because we've hit such a great like stride and then tap into our great, you know, the resources that our educators have. And these are the things that they're doing on a regular basis with newsletters. I'm looking at your face. I don't know if you guys have already had this conversation because I constantly can see areas where, one, it's going to help us build engagement if there, if we're consistently being a resource of. And I can think of just again, from an elementary mom's standpoint of if we're talking about whether, how do you do certain math problems? It's been a really long time or we're talking about middle school. I'm terrified for that because I'm going to be in a lot of trouble and I was really good at math. But you know, those kind of elements where we're able to bring them and they're going to come to us for that especially. So whether it be resources of books or how to, you know, how to decode a certain, you know, from from reading standpoints or from math standpoints, I do think there's a real opportunity there. Again, I completely respect the fact that our staff has very limited, I mean, the resource that we can't build upon is in more time. But I think the efficiency you guys have built in really does But I think the efficiency you guys have built in really does lend itself to expanding on that. So hopefully.
Just to say, you're looking at the team.
I know, I know, I know.
I have a graphic artist.
That's what I said.
We miss not to mention our production people, Jamal, our graphic artist, the people in the back.
Yeah.
Because we talk about it, they do it.
Yeah.
And that is a big deal.
A hundred percent.
I, I'll tell you that Meredith Clifton, who is our graphic artist, she runs the on. Not only is she doing the graphics, she's actually pulling all that information out and building that. And now the TWN. So it's about maximizing your people and their strengths without killing them.
Hundred percent.
And it's a very difficult line to, the ladder.
And for things that like this, I think there are people who just genuinely want to do it. And then there's a, you don't want to force anyone to it, right? You want it to be really organic and exciting. And I think that's what's going to gravitate to people, but I think.
And we do have the video producers. Don't forget about those people. They rock. They're out in schools all the time filming and making their reels and stuff.
Thank you. Now, the biggest thing is, is thanks for the website. I mean, it's so much better than what it was because the information there is, as well as the interactive calendar. The calendar is, is, is really, that's the biggest thing I ever got was, hey, what's going on? What are you doing? What are you doing? Now there's a million ways in order to find it. So it's, uh, just, I mean, everything is just great to reiterate to everybody said. I mean, it's night and day from a couple of years, I mean, it's just night and day from just a couple of years ago. So I appreciate, uh, all of the hard work that your team does and, uh, and, you know, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Sumer Tenon Connor?
No, thank you for the feedback. Team, awesome job. They probably want to wring my neck every now and then because like they're always got a, they're charting a course and then I come into the office and I blow up the whole plan and I say, I got a harebrained idea. We need to do it. And so they're always very flexible and they've, uh, they always pivot and they do such great quality work. We're very proud of the work that you do. So thank you so much. Um, just to close out, just to give you just a little bit of a preview of some of what was talked about on some of the parent resource pages. We have had conversations, so this is like in the oven, but it's not fully baked yet. So, uh, Rachel, you want to give them a little bit of an insight to that?
Yeah, Mr. Connor had already broached that conversation, gave us a good, long runway for it because what we want to do is make sure what we present is family-facing. A lot of our stuff is student and teacher-facing, so we have to convert that. We have to take what we think is most important, big topics by category so that parents can go after the very best resources, but facing what they need. So that requires us to identify that and kind of convert that and then put it out there. In addition to vetting things, because we're going to have to look at other things that we can't create on our own, but that would be really good tools for parents, but there's a vetting process for that. So we're working on that and then we will work with Craig's team to create that landing spot. They'll handle the back door and same with, uh, Mr. Bizwanger. They'll handle that. We will give them what needs to go in there. So there will be a digital parent resource center. That's coming. It's going to be wonderful and it'll be something we can continuously update, like you've said. The other thing that's exciting that Mr. Bizwanger is investigating is AI tools for students. So homework help, but virtual homework help where there is, as long as they have the internet, they can get on and they can get help with a problem, get coaching in reading and in math. There are other areas in our country that are utilizing that and we are investigating what's working, what's not working. So we can also bring that forward and see how we can activate support like that. So that parents can just make sure they're giving students the time and the place and they can learn together from an AI-related coach in those content areas that are more difficult. Parent University is coming up in the spring. We are going to be doing it at Venice High School. We are focusing on parenting skills in this day and age with internet safety, social media platforms and all of the tips and tricks that are involved with that. We are going to also utilize that, that contracted services that we're going to be providing for parents to also meet with certain pockets of students in schools that have had more social media issues than others. Because there are definitely certain pockets and demographics that that's more prevalent. So we're going to utilize that contracted service, which is a speaker to speak to those students and then provide tools to any adult population that would like to come to that event. I've already talked to Mr. Enos about vetting our selection and making sure that we've made a good choice before we sign the dotted line. Um, so those are just some of the things based on what you're already thinking that we are working on. And we typically will pull back in the spring, those program specialists and curriculum directors that have to heavily work on this, but they're in schools. So there's a season where we pull back, we start lining up those projects, extra duty days that we do in the summer to make sure that we can, you know, meet the needs and the expectations of not only you, but our, all of our stakeholders, students, families and teachers.
Mr. Edwards?
One quick question. You mentioned about if internet access, do we still have a substantial amount of families that do not have internet access?
The only families that we would have that do not have internet access are by their own choice. And what I mean by that is we continue to be a, uh, partner with T-Mobile with the 10 million, uh, program. And we have free hotspots for any family that would need them. At some point when I give my update to the board, one of the things that we'll talk about is our home access program. That's been a big success, um, where we ensure that students have the devices and the connectivity that they need to be successful.
Thank you. And, and I'd just like that you be able to upload your excuse note, which I'm, I'm, I'm really looking forward to because if my children were still in school, this would be another game changer for them, as I know. Uh, Mr. Connor, anything further, sir?
That is it, sir.
Thank you. Under member comments, Ms. Barker?
I, I don't have much to say. Thank you all. I really appreciate it and, um, I'm grateful for each of you.
Ms. Marinelli?
Same here. Thank you all. Great job today and kudos.
Ms. Ziegler?
I'll try to be brief. I just had a long day. Um, I had, I know during our retreat, we talked about some priorities. And one thing that I had brought up was, is broader, but it was about healthy initiatives or healthy students and whether we're talking about school lunches, um, or, um, I know cell phones was another piece and I'm glad we're at least enhancing that. Um, but another area I had recently come across was the, let me get this right, the Presidential Physical Fitness, uh, Award, which was something that I vaguely remembered. I didn't do extraordinarily necessarily well on it, but, um, back then, I still wish I could do a pull-up. But, um, but that, it went away in 2018. I did some research and I know that, you know, there's something in my mind that we, I know we spend and talk a lot about the mental health and the, the wellness of our students. And we're really in this battle of trying to figure out ways to really enhance and improve that. And so I had sent something over to Terry, Mr. Connor, excuse me. And, um, just to get some thoughts going and to see if this is something we could really implement here in Sarasota County. Um, so I'm going to maybe pivot over to you to see what, uh, what you guys were able to discuss and get feedback from the board.
Yeah, so just preliminary discussions with the team. I think it would be advantageous to put a task force together, maybe with some parents and some, uh, interested stakeholders around this. I, I do believe, you know, nutrition, healthy living, physical fitness, all those things lead to better academic outcomes for students. So we could potentially have a nice, creative, unique situation around that. Some healthy initiative campaign that we could do for Sarasota County and make it our own, if that's the desire in which we want to go. I think, I think it's a worthy endeavor because it ultimately is going to move the needle for us, whether indirectly or not. I think that would be, um, worthy pursuit.
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Wait, can I get thoughts on that?
Sure. Ms. Marinelli?
Being a product of that was the Presidential Fitness Award. And it was by President Kennedy. And I grew up with that and I absolutely loved it. And I know by looking at me now, you would never know, but all the way through high school, I basically was the winner of all that stuff. But no, on a serious note, we've, we focus so much on academics and instruction. We sometimes forget the whole child. And there needs to be that play. There needs to be that physical fitness because, and, and to get fresh air. And I'm, I'm not politicizing anything or acting like a flower child or anything. But there is so much research on the whole child. And we have just been pushing and pushing academics on our children and forgetting the aspect of play and everything that goes in with that, especially kindergarten. Kindergarten now is almost like second grade instruction. And I understand the push, but I wholeheartedly support looking into that because we've got to find ways for, for kids to interact and be healthy and to use their, their body in a positive way. And, um, I'm all, I'm all for that. But it was, President Kennedy started that, um, like in 1962.
Ms. Barker?
I agree. And I, I would just add to that, um, there is a lot of research about, um, unstructured playtime and, and recess time. And I, you know, sometimes I wonder if we don't do quite enough of that, um, unstructured, not-directed play. And, um, there are districts who have increased their recess time and have seen accompanying raises in their achievement, um, measures. So I'd be very interested in exploring that aspect of it as well, as, as part of the, the Healthy Kids Initiative. And also, um, when we take that recess away from children and what that looks like and how many minutes are left, I think that's an important piece of the puzzle as well, so.
Mr. Edwards?
I really love all of the programming and nutritional part of the conversation. I'm cautious about the brand laying over it because I think that's venturing into a world that we are trying to avoid from a discussion standpoint. I think we can brand it as a Sarasota initiative and, and, and own it as our own and incorporate all of those incredible conversations and move forward. I love the idea.
I, I, that was what we had talked about and it was kind of more of the, to make it Sarasota. Um, and I had just written down academically and physically fit. Like we're focused on that area, whether it be structured, whether it be, just elevating the aspect that there's a lot of ways to really, that, that's all very positive for our students and for our staff. And knowing that we only have so many hours in a day. I know. So it's creative of trying to utilize that time. And I, yes, that's always the challenge and I know we're working our staff really, really hard. But, um, so I, I'm excited about having a task force to really come to the table and think about some great ways because there may be some unexpected benefits at the end, um, as well. So thank you.
Well, I, I haven't commented yet, but I, I would like, uh, ice cream and Oreos that are, they are nutritious and they do serve value. So as long as we don't trade out our carrot sticks and celery, uh, and, and we eliminate cookie cakes, uh, then I would be more than in favor of it. Uh, but ultimately, yes, I think that that's something that, anytime we can do that, we, we can, uh, we should be able to put that because it's for the whole child, not just for the, just for the academic. Mr. Edwards?
I, uh, share the fact that it was a wonderful workshop and I loved all of the conversation. And thank you for a wonderful, um, morning and afternoon.
Well, I also concur. I also would say, apologize out there. I know I got some text messages about what was going on. Uh, executive session did run long because of safety and security. Um, and as a board, I can tell you as well as staff is that that's one thing that we're a hundred percent committed on is to making sure that our kids are safe and our students are safe and we do the very, very best. And sometimes, um, that does cause delays and, and that was for the reason for today. Uh, seeing that, great presentations as always, as we continue to move forward to be the leader in education as well as everything else in Sarasota, as we should always lead and never follow here because we have the people, the students, the families and the backing of our community to do it. Seeing that, uh, the board will reconvene on March 11th at 3:00 PM for an expulsion hearing. Um, but that is closed to the public. And then we have 6:00 PM will be our next scheduled board meeting. Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn for today.